I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Holden Ron Garnett.
Here.
Holden Carl Schultz.
Here.
Holden Doctor Zen Do Not.
Disserve.
Holden Annette Hager.
Here.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approval of the agenda.
Second.
Would you make a thing, on favor?
Aye.
Vote. Prove as a contented agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Vote. Public forum, nobody signed up for that. Canvas and other electorally developed accepted by the board. That's pretty well set, right? There wasn't nobody opposed. You got the canvass in front of you, don't you? I had mine. Anybody want to make a motion to the committee? And, you guys there?
Make a motion to the canvassing and election people.
No second.
Would you make a favor?
Aye.
On favor?
Aye.
Vote. Swearing in a newly elected office. I know it don't seem to make sense, but that's the way it is, even though all the things. Get up there. Make us if I'm staying brother, wait there. Can you get a picture of all that? Yeah, I'll come, I'm, come over there. Who are you going? Huh?
That was in the election.
Oh. My God, you are funny here. Would you go over and get the present for that?
All right, well hang on, do this word. All right. Raise your hand. I state your name.
Ron Bynum.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
For the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Missouri.
And the State of Missouri.
The provision of all laws of this state.
The provision of all laws of this state.
Affecting cities of this class.
Affecting cities of this class.
And ordinances of the city.
And ordinances of the city.
That I possess the qualifications required.
That I possess the qualifications required.
For such office as specified in the laws.
For such office as specified in the laws.
Of the State of Missouri.
Of the State of Missouri.
And I hold to me myself faithfully in said office.
Did you see the canvass? You got one that was.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, it's time to select the board president, actually, board president and mayor of Roll County. Yeah, that comes up every year or two. Do we have any nominations?
Yeah, I like the nomination, yeah. For her, uh, for president of the board for her longevity being the first alderman or the longest alderman here. And also for her skill and job and ability.
Did we have a second?
A second.
Would you make a thing, on favor?
Aye.
Vote. And that makes you vote second. Starting immediately. I did. Do you feel any dinner? Okay. Ooh, bill number, oh, just sitting there, but okay. Need a motion to, for the reading of bill number nine seventy-nine heading on.
Make a motion to reading of bill number nine seventy-nine heading on.
One second.
On favor, vote on that. Roll call, vote for first reading of bill nine seventy-nine, heading only. Um, Holden Ron Garnett.
Yes.
Holden Carl Schultz.
Yes.
Holden and Doctor Zen Do Not.
Yes.
Holden Annette Hager.
Yes.
An ordinance setting basic rates in the city of Saint Mary, Missouri for water service from the city water work system to be known as the water rate schedule ordinance.
Now, before I call for a second vote, we were in some conversation here, so I'm gonna.
I was wondering.
Go ahead and ask them all.
Yeah, I was, I was wondering, uh, if I only use, if I use a thousand gallons as a set price, if I use twelve hundred gallons, then I'm paying two thousand for it. It just seems like, you know.
But that's got nothing to do with your origin, that ain't got nothing to do.
Well, what I'm saying though, is that it makes it higher.
They go a thousand.
Yeah.
Definitely.
So why can't we just go on the twelve hundred and figure out a way to go to twelve hundred?
If you do a thousand and one gallon, you might as well go ahead and use two thousand. Oh, one ninety-nine.
I can't afford two thousand.
I mean, that's, that's the way it's set up, had been for years. I know it don't seem fair, but.
Well, it's, it can't be changed, it's been that way for years.
Huh?
It can't be changed, it's been that way for years, or what?
It's been like this, I can't even remember what it was, I don't know.
And you can't change that at all?
It's probably been.
Well, I mean.
Nine, ten years that we've been.
It's, it's, well, but it has to be that way then, just to.
Nobody goes within gallons.
Yes.
In a, no.
Whenever we pay Saint Mary's for theirs, that's.
That's the same way we get water, our bill. We do the same thing.
Oh, I understand that, yeah, I'm just saying that.
Well, if we get billed one way, we can't go another way. We, if you use a.
Yeah.
One gallon, we gotta build for a thousand gallons on it, we gotta pay for your other bill.
I don't like it either, Maria, but that's just the way it is.
Yeah, I just.
You might, you might.
I just wanted to say, you know, when I meet her.
Own it, board, own it, order. Anyway.
Well, just to be clear on her point, on the increments, it's in, it's in thousand gallon increments, right? And that's not determined by the city, that's determined by the provider of the water.
Well, they could change it.
Yeah.
But that, I don't know that one way, but we're doing it the way we get billed.
Yes, and it, we, the city could.
And you, no, no city goes by gallons, nobody. Some of them may go by five hundred, uh, this, I don't know.
Yeah, that's.
That help.
Point.
But we don't want, it, it, if we did change it that way, then we probably had to raise the water rate. Because we lose money.
Yeah.
We made our, our way.
I know, but it's just on our backs, it's just like somebody, you know, I don't know how you.
It would make no difference if we changed that to every gallon. Then we wouldn't be getting enough money to pay our water bills.
Well, then go.
And we'd have to raise the rates and you could be.
Then go two hundred gallons or something, but you could, two thousand.
You're not understanding what I'm saying.
I understand.
We'll get a thousand for every gallon over, now that most people are being in five, six, seven, eight, huh? They hardly anybody just use one gallon over a thousand.
Well, you, you're counting by the gallons, you're counting by the hundred, or the, you know, that type of thing would be, would make more sense. Run it up to the air.
This, this would be a different order, this, I'm, right now, I'm discussing this ordinance, how much the water is cost. And that's all we're talking about. Now, I'm, I'm, we tried to explain to you the elements, and that's the way it is. And we can't afford to change it, if we do, we raise the rate, if it makes any difference how many money we.
Yeah, we're raising the rates anyway, sir.
Well, if, did anybody else have anything to ask on this ordinance, nine seventy-nine?
The question, question on the car. As in, present reference, uh, is, what is the percentage of, of the water rates going up? I mean, that's.
Uh, three percent, I think it is, three percent on water.
Eight percent on sewer. Is that gonna cover the cost of the water?
I want to raise it there, but by the nickel more.
Okay.
We always, and get a little bit to it. I think it's a nickel more than the, the, what we're actually getting charged, is a thirty cents, it'd be about thirty five cents, something like that. But that's all, where we did defend it, we could, if we did what with the law required, we'd have to raise another dollar.
Well, and the reason why I'm asking that is for us having to coordinate the water that's coming from the county, is, you know, the, the cost efficient on that too.
Yes. But we cannot let them raise anything without us raising, we have to, we got no choice, so we're just standing by. And the sewers and we're shaking the water. Okay, motion for a second read.
Make a motion for second reading of bill number nine seventy-nine.
Oh, that was all, that was all?
That was all.
I'm sorry, go ahead. She did it.
Second.
Would you make a thing, roll call?
All right, roll call, vote for second reading of bill nine seventy-nine. Holden Ron Garnett. Yes. Holden Carl Schultz.
Yes.
Holden and Doctor Zen Do Not.
Yes.
Holden Annette Hager.
Yes.
All right, second reading of bill nine seventy-nine. An ordinance setting basic rates in the city of Saint Mary, Missouri for water service from the city water work system to be known as the water rate schedule ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt bill number nine seventy-nine.
Second.
Roll call. All right, roll call, for adoption of bill nine seventy-nine. Holden Ron Garnett.
Yes.
Holden Carl Schultz.
Yes.
Holden and Doctor Zen Do Not.
Yes.
Holden Annette Hager.
Yes.
Motion passed, bill adopted.
You don't pay. Need a motion for a reading of bill number nine eighty.
Make a motion to read number bill number nine eighty, heading only.
One second.
On favor?
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry. Roll call, vote for first reading by heading only of bill nine eighty. Um, Holden Ron Garnett.
Yes.
Holden Carl Schultz.
Yes.
Holden and Doctor Zen Do Not.
Yes.
Holden Annette Hager.
Yes.
Second, or first reading of bill nine eighty. An ordinance setting basic rates in the city of Saint Mary, Missouri for wastewater service from the city wastewater system to be known as the wastewater rate schedule ordinance.
Motion. Do you have a question?
I don't.
Okay, we, the motion forward.
Make a motion for reading of, second reading of bill number nine eighty, heading only.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Roll call, for second reading of bill nine eighty. Holden Ron Garnett.
Yes.
Holden Carl Schultz.
Yes.
Holden and Doctor Zen Do Not.
Yes.
Holden Annette Hager.
Yes.
First reading of bill nine eighty by heading only.
Second.
Oh, sorry, second reading of bill nine eighty by heading only. An ordinance setting basic rates in the city of Saint Mary, Missouri for the wastewater service from the city wastewater system to be known as the wastewater rate schedule ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt bill number nine eighty.
Second.
Roll call. Next, roll call, for adoption of bill nine eighty. Um, Holden Ron Garnett.
Aye.
Holden Carl Schultz.
Aye.
Holden and Doctor Zen Do Not.
Right.
Holden Annette Hager.
Aye.
Motion passed, bill adopted.
Okay, the board member, you got anything?
No, Missouri just believed says it's gonna be like, a couple of months is what they said, as far as we're gonna stay this month, so that's all I've got.
Oh, and they, you pay my money?
Yeah.
Tell them we're ready for it, I know.
Take four years.
Um, please, department.
Uh, fifty call service, uh, forty-eight citations issued for narcotic arrests so far. I have two narcotic investigations going on, six more is violations that are being corrected this time. If you haven't noticed, going through town. Three domestic services, four medical, uh, once home vehicle, I've got sixty cases, they're still not disposed through the courts. And also, uh, if I have some of the money in my hand, I might like to attend the Missouri Investigator Association, Ben Branson, at the end of May. With the board's approval. Other than that, that's all I have for the courts this month.
We will, whether they make.
End of May, yeah. I just gotta, I signed up for a waiver to see if I have one of the ones that could be waived, since we are a four-class city, if it does, it won't be on cost at all.
Well, you, you would get your salary.
Yeah, um, and I get my post trade hours, I get sixteen.
I recommend with the good work we're getting, I am the best at it, and we do, that we send you the debt. We'll come up with some money, so, and, anybody wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, second. On favor?
Aye.
Vote. Are you going? Take me with you. Branson.
I got, yeah, I got barbecue.
Yeah, I'm with you. You anybody making a motion, did I go with you?
No.
Denied.
Okay, fire button.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, we had one call, fire investigation this month. Uh, we're still in the process of, uh, changing some stuff around the firehouse up there. Uh, got some more, uh, work done to the inside where we opened the bay up. Um, the other part is, is, uh. The new fire truck, they're in, uh, we got, uh. Uh, Rude Graphics is in the process of designing our decal Ford, uh, they're pretty behind right now, could do with the cover stuff, they're doing a lot of new stuff, but uh, they're supposed to send me the, uh, copy, the, the way it's gonna look on the truck, and we approved it, so as soon as that's done, it's gonna be put together, and it's kinda, probably start to wear that truck, and be put in service. Anyway, that's all I have to record on my collection.
Hey. Tree.
Cole's got two dozen of the coal pads put on the road, I did spring it out, got a lot of old stuff. He started on the ditch line, started playing on them. Everybody's doing all the mowing and maintaining that, and he's got pretty well caught up on that. All we got right now.
Yeah. To that, I would add, uh, on the coal patch, on Sycamore and Third, I know it's been filled in there, but it's already, so many drove over it, snuck the tires into it. So, that area will probably, I would say, you know, the grid wrap under it, and then stone, and then coal patch on top of it, in order for the hole. Because it's a real tight quarter, and everybody cuts it.
Right, that's one thing.
Dump my dad Monroe corn, hit corn.
Uh, down the. Sycamore and Third, up by my.
Oh, those, those, okay, okay, I'm talking forward.
Yeah, and then on, uh, cemetery road, that's dumped from your place. I know you guys have cut down a lot of, uh, unders, you know, the.
Trees.
Trees and stuff like that. But I, I would say slow down on that, because what I have, I walk, you know, every morning. And that road is getting undercut now, and, well, although the vines and all that stuff are, you know, they're a nuisance or whatever, no one likes them. They do break water coming down, so you're gonna, if you cut that stuff down, you're gonna get a faster flow of water down there, you're gonna get a higher erosion. It's gonna hit the side of the dirt under that road and undercut it more.
Well, the issue we had on that, this tree was growing, overgrown.
Yeah.
And the school bus was hitting it, and the farm tractors, and the equipment was hitting the.
I didn't see, but. But it's, it's definitely washing, and you can see, you know, it's a, a nice stretch of the road that's getting undercut, so I don't know how to repair that, but it probably needs some rock right next to it to cut the, the erosion there, so.
Had an issue here a while back on that, that one of the school bus drivers on off here broke the culvert, and began to replace that, it's part of our synergy.
No, it's no culvert there, it's just all.
Will give him birth for that?
Yeah, I'm sure he'll save you then.
I just heard that first.
They, you know, I, this joker said, uh, just contact him with, with Manpower.
And he, he wasn't aware of that?
He said he was. Cody did that.
I didn't, I didn't do nothing, I got a pass, I didn't.
Cause Cody did the project, I don't know.
Yeah, he did the labor.
We'll, we'll get that.
Leaving the culvert.
No, what we did, stripped the, uh, the clay cow culvert in there, extended it down.
That way they wouldn't up.
It's good, it's holed up.
Well, this, butt line come down, and, and, you know, others do it, I mean, I, I, I'd argue the motion. We'll work on that, talk to them once.
And maybe that culvert under Sycamore, right on fourth, too, I think that's blocked, isn't it? But you have it.
Yeah, I'll do that, yeah.
Yeah.
Work on that.
So, and the water's not gonna wanna make a right, a right turn.
We've talked about that.
Yeah.
Push it straight.
Of course, I know there's no culvert on Sycamore and.
Under it.
And Third, uh, Sycamore and Fourth, they should be, but that's.
Should be.
Sycamore, which ain't a road, but it is a road.
Yeah, that's our.
I don't mind being a culvert under that, just don't make sense. Ain't no way you're gonna stop water and turn here, uh, ninety right there, it ain't gonna happen.
You're right, I know, we discussed that, okay.
We've discussed that several times, though we just haven't been with, with weather and everything, but yeah, all we got there, culvert and some kind of, we did, and like to get it, like to get the ditch cut and grass grown in it before we put the culvert in, we would stop all that erosion. So you could, you could dig it in and put that in, that was gonna wash before the grass grew.
Right, plus we got the old extra structure, that, from the old pipeline that runs up through there. And also, we got the main phone line, and, uh, that, the fiber line goes through there, so we gotta watch all that deep.
Yeah, I thought there was a culvert there, because Robert Meyer had water coming into his brother-in-law's house there on the corner, this is probably about seven years ago, maybe longer. And, uh, he, they tried digging it out over there manually, you know, in the rain, so when, in mowing, I noticed that there's some rock and maybe a pipe there, but you guys would know better than that person.
I wish you would.
It's not that we don't find aware of it, and we're on, but to think, been real good weather, and with all the other thing, we had going, and, you know, all in there, all the breakdown, it just.
Do you want me to dig?
It's early in the summer, yeah, we will be getting to it, and it is on the agenda.
If you, I mean, I can dig it out a little bit with my back.
Well, you, you can't just dig the street out and take a culvert there, we gotta do, we gotta dig the ditch and everything, it's not that simple.
Okay.
But, uh, but it is on the agenda, but it's been like that for twenty, thirty, thirty-four years, but I don't know why, because it's wrong. But I thought at one time it used to be a culvert, and we may find one, when we go to work, I'm hoping there is. Okay?
Yep.
Park, the wastewater.
Um, the wastewater system, which, um, has gotten a lot of maintenance since the, uh, it froze up. One of the units, uh, got new bearings just recently, this past week.
Both units are done and completed, and we.
Both are done. But the one that was not.
Both units.
Yes.
Both, everyone, both did.
Both got new bearings.
And were done in one day. They estimated two twelve-hour days, and they did it more than eight hours.
Um, I also would like, um, to set up some time, David, if you would help me do this. Um, with any interested citizens in Saint Mary about, um, water, more information, and, um, see if there are other ideas that people have or concerns that they have about the water, um, given that there is no latitude to anything about rates. Um, considering other ways to, um, help afford water for those who can't, so.
Well, I bet we all the citizens in town, everybody went down, they see a wet spot, they jumping on the heat, uh, we get a hold of us. And it may be a waste, and it may be, say, thousands of gallons of water. But we're every citizen in town, so we can't find nobody, getting their back charged, or back valleys and things. But usually, people live there, if they see a wet spot, they know that hasn't normally been there. And, you know, maybe get a letter out and things, there's a lot of things after them, cause if we could cut all our waste down, we'd be a lot better.
There is a wet spot just north of the church, at my place, uh, cause there's water running, even when it's not raining sometimes.
That, that is a spring.
Yeah, that goes down in my property into the.
There's, there's several, man.
There's no water main, one highway sixty-one, it's all crossed by the road tracks, and the only water main that comes down off that hill is actually the new water main we put into the hydrant.
Where they are, lines running down.
There is water meters, but that's been doing after years, anyways, and we thought it was leaks, we tested the water, and it's always been, you know, go.
Is it under the road?
Huh?
Is it under the road, the spring? Like.
It comes off our hill.
It's on the foot of the hill.
Yeah, it's on the hill.
Well, that doesn't hang on sixty-one down, it's got, I got, I got three springs in my garden.
Yeah.
And you ever, I have never seen one of them go dry, I don't care how dry, if they're, if they're, they'll come and go, but one of them, they, it's always there.
Yep.
Okay, then, anyone on their way through any water?
I'm just.
But I was real shocked that, I, I thought they got that done, white. So they was done in eight hours, well, they might have traveled time and stuff like that, it's gonna be more than eight hours, but I was really surprised that they were, they were doing that, and that was, they just cut the bearings off, and put the new ones on, and set it back down, and put in place, and those things must have went perfect. Fortunately, the shaft was messed up, you know.
Correct.
Chats were good, everything went fine.
Yeah.
They was covering themselves for a lot of different things, I bet.
Well, and I know the, um, uh, Carl, you had pointed out before, um, you know, those, the management of the ongoing daily maintenance of those bearings uh, has been tightened up significantly, so.
We can't, they're going through it.
Monitoring the temperature of the bearing to, um, identify problems with it.
And you burned, you, you went and bought them a thing to check it with, didn't you, a heat life, or, did you? I think you put a bill on that, didn't you?
Yep.
I ain't gonna pay, even my love.
I know they've got special grease on that, too, that, that.
Yeah, they took the, the long tubes that went to it, in case those were getting the bubble, and then not.
Right.
Transferring.
More fishing, that grease is.
So they gotta, you gotta bend down now, too.
Okay.
Park and down there, and. I go.
Park was, I guess, the Easter.
Yeah, Easter, uh, kind of, well, no complaints that I heard, I don't know if you heard anything, on your.
No, kids don't have.
I don't know how well we're at it, I didn't know anything.
Well, there's.
I'm about.
Turnout, surprisingly, you know, so.
Actually, they do have a big turnout.
Yeah. And then, kind of a corollary to the park stuff, I had someone approach me about doing events, or, you know, desire to see events done in the city, like bluegrass. You know, a couple of bluegrass parties, or something like that. I don't know how that interacts with whatever baters usually have going now, but they're there, it's kind of natural, there's the toilet, and, you know, amenities there. But, uh, as a, kind of like a fairground type of thing, that we, if you did something like that, would it be at the parks, or someplace that's more amphitheater-like, like the foot of the hill, you know, below Saint Mary's, or even a, a my grounds there, you know, for a small band, with twenty or thirty people, you know, showing up.
I mean, it's, it could be looked into, but it's a further time, and further situation, with where need and bad, and everything, and hope it's way down the future, but.
Well, actually, the outdoor stuff lends itself well to that, because you can social distance, and, you know, spread.
Yeah, I think, I think some of them, well, crowds, uh, on TV, they.
Yeah, but, of, of course, they do that, but we're not talking about.
All I'm saying is, I got a problem with anything, but I'd like to wait back, we ain't had one in fifty years, I'd like to see this get more over with before we, personally, our little town, start having crowded together. Cause I see, I told my, I know when I have a crowd, I see on TV, but social distance, it doesn't work when you got crowds. I don't care if it's a hundred people or five thousand people, it just don't work, not when you're doing things, and people moving around. But now, I don't have, but I would like to say this, and I'm hoping to get the board to agree, but I have every intention of setting the fence down around the tennis court, so there's no tennis court anymore. She breaks, you, bring him with the child, but it could be used for skateboards and things, and the fence is just in the way, eight kids run to. I have every intention of setting the fence down around the football field, cause nobody plays football. Now, it could still be set up for soccer real easy, everybody's going to soccer, it's not anybody's building baseball fields. We have no kids around here, no, no desire, we used to have tournaments, we used to have hundreds of people down, but that don't go no more. But it's, if, I would say that if anybody ever approached the city again, we'd more likely for a soccer field, than it will be a baseball field.
Yeah, cause the dugouts there, they can fall down, the roots are.
But the dugout was falling out, we had to take them down, we did that before the egg hunt, because we were afraid some kids over there get hurt, so they were crumbling down. We still got a building, gotta come in, we had to take down the provision behind it. Bleachers.
I think, um, you know, to Zen's point, I think it would be reasonable to consider how to repurpose the space that's there. And have it go for the benefit of Saint Mary.
How we can repurpose dugout, it's not gonna be.
No, no way. I said, take it all out.
Yeah, we're digging it all up.
Turn it, turn it into a, a concert.
Oh, I'm just gonna.
Yeah, yeah. Weddings and.
But.
A lot, a lot of those lines, are there, uh, like ordinances? So along, along those lines, are there, uh, like ordinances in effect that govern that type of stuff, or is it just been?
What do you mean? What that's.
And does the city have, uh, its own set of stipulations, like in order for you to have more than twenty, forty people meet, do you have to have two porta potties or?
Now, Dr. I'm aware of you just.
Something like that, but there's no way it's live.
We got two bathrooms up there.
Yeah, we should.
But if you had, uh, it was gonna be a few hundred people up there, you would have to bring in four porta potties.
And then what about?
People that organize that stuff usually, you know, does that.
And what about these guys that, like, typically it's in June, you see cyclists going through there, riding cross-country, you know. Do we, have we ever solicited, uh, their, them, you know, to camp here or?
When we don't.
Us or J C's have.
We don't make a break to leaving our bathrooms open twenty-four hours a day, cause we have too much family. We, it's isolated place, it's out, you know.
But under.
What you're saying is great, but in most cities, they're parked before that to be seen, they're patrolled or that stuff. That is so isolated back there that the bicycles be great. I mean, they're, they're good people and you talk to them all the time. But they're not the only gonna be there. There, they be a few. But that's been open so long, but I wouldn't object to it, but the fact is if we leave it open, you might want to get your bill, because bad living is gonna go down there at night time and tear everything up. That would find it there. That, that's the fact of life down there. We're even in our cemetery now. We have, we have a lock brigade on the cemetery. They been going in there. We find surrender, they have some people in there. We get called every day. There's all the trash that they know they're going in the cemetery, getting away from faith, think they're okay in the cemetery. We've had to lock the cemetery. There's a cafeteria, there's a, there's a greed that, you know, people can still walk in, they're not the walkie, but they, they were driving back there. Parking in the new park back there. We've had them pick up surrender and beer bottles and everything, every day.
Okay, but we gotta find a way to push, we can't let that stop progress and, uh, creating some positive things around that will attract other people. We have to focus, I think, more on the positive stuff, taking into account the fact that we have to police it now.
I, I agree with you on one thing. You're talking about bicycles. I'm more interested in doing something for the people that lives in this town to get them down there to use the park. If I'm gonna spend money, I already be looking at something that more beneficiaries try to get our own rather than local people down there. And I got no problem. If you do that, you might be able to wind up with campers and things like that. But our own people don't, that park is nothing, it's, it's not used. I rent it once a year, a few other people go down there. They ain't ten people use that on a regular basis. Maybe something we can do to get it going. We put swings, we put everything, they just lay everywhere else, or they get broke.
How thick are mosquitoes?
I, I can tell you, I don't know, I don't think that back during the day, but I, 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 someday I might go through the chamber and record and see how much money we have spent on that park. Twenty of them. And.
The church has spent money too, and they, they like that too, you know, so it's just, until there's a security measure put in place and that, and then getting everything. Or, yeah, that'd be great, you know, have venues and I, I'm all for it. Like Scott said, that's two fairs a year, bring some kids and everything else, you know. Fire department shows up, air vac, everything like that, but till we get to that point where we can monitor that or there's more police presence or funding for that, we're kind of beating around a bush in the hill, you know what I'm saying? And it's bad, when I was a kid, that was a good place. I went down there, you know, so it's just not like it used to be.
See the goal, you know, play ball there for years, years when we was kids, you know.
Well, we, we still, we wanted to defend that thing out, what we can mobilize to, move in and have, and then we wanna go back with soccer field or the fence ain't going nowhere. I mean, going roll it out and set it off.
I was, like I do, I've done a lot of cross-country motorcycling and if I, and I don't sleep at hotels, I just sleep outside of the road a lot of times. And J C's and Kiwanis Parks in these towns are like perfect places to camp, plus it's a little, and I've done it many times.
But then, I tell you, it's big enough to have the Kiwanis Park and the things that you're talking about. Yeah, how many times do you stop in a town as small as ours and find all the convenience things you're talking about? That can't even hardly survive on what we got. How many times do you stop in a little town outside of Saint Mary's that's got a real nice park, open twenty-four hours a day with lights up and everything? It ain't for you.
I, uh, I'd, I'd like to move that Zen develop a master plan with assistance.
Yeah, sure.
Or, um, something which really takes into account not only what's desired for growth and, um, you know, positive image in the city, as well as some of the challenges that Carl, um, brings forward, you know, in cost, vandalism, all those other issues too. Because if there's just nice that's there, there's no reason we can't.
I don't have a problem.
Find something that's really.
But I know you do think I'm hard, noble on this, but since you came here, an idea of how many times that I've been through this. How many dollars have been spent on this? How many suggestions been made? Get the minutes out, go back fifteen years and start reading what we done and it all goes down the drain, because things change. And we got vandalism and we still got vandalism and that park is it back there. It's complete. Most cities got a park where you don't see them from the road, where they go to there. Yeah, I mean, I'll back off and let you go down anything, twenty-five dollars. But then five years later, it's gonna be all gone. Ain't nothing gonna happen. It's been done, it's been done, and time ain't getting no better, they getting worse, and people getting worse.
It's, it's.
But I, y'all work out and I'll work anyway I can with you. I'll try to get you some chamber money. And I don't wanna take it. I hope God, I don't ask that I told you so. But I know what it is. I mean, I'm one of mine since nineteen seventy-four. We had a hell of a park there. You could go down there and get there, have barbecue, and you know, damn it, and great, but it all died away when it took, quit paying the late fall, it all growed up, left town, three plus, no town, no kids. You know, British used to have a youth group here, you know, there was a lot of things. And it ain't coming back, cause the people come here. But I don't care. If, if the internet can find something and get something to work, I, man, I love that work. But we, and you can't move a park out of here in the flood zone and fix up everything, it's gonna be washed away or no good. And it's concluded down there, they drive back there. Is it, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to find it is. I don't believe they're beating around the bush. But if them can do it, unfortunately, I even try to get you some chamber money if we're down there.
Okay.
But the chamber, up by, the chamber has been through this, because we have supported it so much. And we went back there and I did two, many years ago, we did something to clean the tables and everything, spent a few thousand dollars. Going out. But with that being said, if you can work up something, we're looking at it. I won't block it, but I, I'm gonna have a hard time supporting it, because I, I've been through it too many times. We done worked too many times. I realize you didn't live here then any time, and you haven't seen the money spent on it and the hard work put in it and. It's all. Okay, Darrell? Anybody more?
Nope.
Since, since lately. Friends, good to you, yeah? Where are we going? You got anything you'd like to discuss or talk about or?
I don't, I wanna know how much money is in the street funds and what, what is your project? Cause I've had two, two or three hitters didn't do like you did when you was first hit. You sit down and plan for doing certain things.
Yeah, I kind of been looking at some of that. I ain't really got involved as far as I want to yet. I looked a little bit at the street fund earlier a while ago, but some of the things that I was doing, that money is gone. Ain't no money right now. I know what you want and I know everything we all wanna do. Can you answer the question on?
Currently, in our street fund, we have twenty-five thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
And when's the last time we rebuilt the street or repaved the street? Besides the patching up there?
What page?
The patching up.
South or you talking about the church street?
What they just did?
What they just did?
The cop.
The cop patch.
The cop that's getting it and the cop now.
They do that every year, but that's, that's not fixing the street.
But usually call, woman in for that, make do a street at a time.
We used to, when I wasn't there before, and we always had a thing of overlaying, that saving the street and trying to, uh, fix one. We, if you had a street, like we used to keep third street, cause of flooding and something, we overlay it a little bit and save it. And try, and we have bought some streets, we did some work, but it went away. I don't know, but we don't seem to be getting the income we used to get. And I don't know why. Well, I do now, and it's crawling there. But our, our road tax money is way, way down. And it has to be, cause nobody traveled like they was, and it don't percentage. And we had a deal that, you know, when they were, anything we're supposed to pay for this third street, that's the biggest joke I've ever seen in my life. And I was so embarrassed when I was thinking of it, that that was, how many dollars?
They only gave us like just over two thousand dollars to.
Then we had to do it, and that's what they did.
Yeah.
That was embarrassing. That two thousand dollars, we've been good, to bring in a cupboard or a ditch or something, but sometimes you have to do what they're much for when they hear they. But I would love to get back to being able to, uh, but the fact of going up, uh, doing a street down, it's, it's impossible. The, the last street was fourth street. What'd that cost? And that was a big mistake. It would've been twice that much longer.
That's the, the deal with Chokers, where they did like eleven thousand and then charges like over four.
But through a cliff or area, that many days, they lost ten thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, we, we just made what, three, three?
They built it, eleven thousand, but it's twenty-seven thousand, but two cliffs over there, they didn't get, you know, that's a sore spot. I don't wanna brood that deep yet, but then twenty thousand dollars don't do nothing more.
And what about twenty years? I'm gonna be in the store.
I mean, you guys are talking, we tried to build it back up. I agree with you, a hundred percent.
Twenty-seven years and only three lots of dirt or rock on that street.
I get you rock. I get you rock, but that ain't what you want, that ain't what I want.
Well, I'd like to see somebody make a concerted effort to pave that street, this is city street. Twenty-seven years, I've been sitting up there driving on gravel, nice dirt, grass in the middle. That's all I'm saying. I don't wanna be the day horse, but Saint Mary's, Saint Mary's in twenty-seven years, that's a little long. That's a little long.
Well.
That's all I'm saying.
I mean, if you wanna say that, that street's been there for over a hundred years. So there was other people lived there for seventy-five years and seventy-one, but I mean, that's a sizable point.
Right, right.
It, it.
I'm just looking for the point of this one.
It, it.
What's the point?
If I could do it, I'd do it tomorrow. Not on your street, I'd do, uh, in the third street down there. Uh, White Drive back there, the road going back to White Drive, not because that was named after me and my brother, my son. But he just happened to live one. But I ain't got the money to do it.
Well.
And do my.
Chip and silver, chip and silver's the easy way to go. They did it on the island, they do it on the island every so often.
You know how much money they all can get? They got, they make a fortune over there. All that farmland over there, all that property type they give, they got enough money to ask all that every year. They got money.
You want me to write a deal in on, on petition to the city? I have a copy of the letter that bottomed.
What?
Estimated on how much it costs? Thirty-five hundred dollars. I know that's back then, it was thirty-five hundred dollars to do that street. Nobody thought about it.
What street?
The church street.
On church street. Thirty-five hundred dollars? Thirty-five, I can show it to you. I said it.
What, what?
I said it.
What year?
Huh?
What year?
I don't know what year it was, but I'll make sure you get it. But all I'm saying is, it was over, when it was dirt cheap to pay, we did it. We paid four street, I think, by the way, four or five times, third street, three or four times, then we paid two alleys, and then we paid fourth street. Twenty-seven? And then we paid all up around the church, all up around the church. I went out and measured, ninety feet by sixty feet, I paid it. The city paid for it.
Nah, I don't think they paid for it. I, I beg your pardon. They was some, uh, they was some, uh, county man there, there was some church man there, they was some, uh, 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 hell, I remember, chamber money in there. Ain't a lot of different organizations involved in that church. The street park, very little of that is street.
Wow, it's very.
I know that, but the street park, they did not do the church park a lot. We didn't put one penny in there. And I beg your pardon, if you say we did, you bring me through, cause you can put me in jail, because I was a mayor then. And we didn't do it. They were several organizations, like I said, involved in it. Their only public we did was the little park fund, Frank Gerardo and that house there. And we did not do any of the church or any of that with city money. We did do it with some of the chamber money, the church money, and there might be some government money in there somewhere, I don't know. I doubt it would be in church.
I just wanna see a plan on what we got. We plan for everything else, but when we don't plan, we fail. We lose. And we already losing now. We losing, 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 and we, we gotta get back. Uh, like, that's what I said, when you first here, you set it up. I'm over the badness.
And we had income coming in that could do that. We ain't got it coming in right now.
We get it every, every time, every quarter from the county.
You wanna know what we got last quarter?
Saying, it's went down quite a bit.
You wanna know what happened?
I understand, I checked it. I don't know.
You get the big story, don't worry about it.
But it's not bad. We get it every year. I mean, every quarter.
But we had a budget in them. We had money. We were getting good money. And I got a lot of money. We borrowed money from a chamber and paid it back to do something on the street and tell them where to get. The chamber's been trying to carry this city now for the last year, so helping with the water, helping with air, helping with everything. And we didn't help so much. We've al, we've always helped with a lot of stuff, but the, the tax dog, our, our city of gas tax has been the same, what, seventeen years? Twenty-one years, something like that. But the prices of doing roads and things is quadruple.
I'm saying.
You know what they paying for? Two hundred pound, uh, two ton of coal that mix, that's a cheaper. What they paying for that? Eight dollars?
It was sixty times over.
Sixty dollars, twenty dollars.
I was selling for coal prices, I don't care. I really don't.
It won't hold up.
Well, you don't need the grass. I've been eating that dust and gravel for twenty-seven years. Come on now.
I did a lot of gravel rolling. I was done. I didn't work. I could pick the gravel rolling better than I could the one going back there to the park, if I had member of the county. We couldn't do nothing to that, and that was not the front end.
Yeah.
But we couldn't afford to fix it. Finally, the county had to fix it, cause there are county roads there, the county, they fixed it. They fixed the bridge and the road, but we couldn't fix it. We going out and dump coal bags in and everything and then they all run down off the road to get back to dump leaves. It is, we don't wanna fix your street, uh.
Church Street is the city street.
The other, the other in the third street, that's city street over there. Third street, they've been done just as long as yours has, and it's just bad too. It ain't because of you. He lived on it.
I just want money. That's all I want is money, huh? That's all I want.
If I ever get the money to fix the streets, we will. But right now, we can't.
That was the one.
I can't get one overlay. Now, no way I'm gonna put a new street on yours and lose another, and you know that. You don't wanna stand on that.
You, you know how long I've been paying taxes.
I know how long you stay.
I know how I've been paying taxes. It's not like I've been a dream, because those.
I might pay more taxes than you do.
Those street taxes are designed to be used on streets, not on anything else.
Your tax money ain't doing the street. That's gas tax money does that.
I said, street taxes, what we get from the county is supposed to use on streets. That's what it's designed for.
It is. It is. What, twelve hundred dollars? Two thousand, three thousand, what we get from the county? Eight dollars?
We, we used to get almost four thousand, and then they just dropped because.
Well, even if you were four dollars, if they were twenty years, we, we couldn't even do your street, but it helps with the budget of mowing and, I mean, fixing streets and cleaning out the ditches and things, the four dollars ain't gonna do nothing, nor is fixing a, a street that's three hundred dollars long. We talking about from all the way from, uh, Sixth Street to your house. His is private after he turned on, going back to his. He's a private after he turned on, going back to his.
I just wanna know- Baby checked into the chicken seal.
Huh?
Check into a chicken seal.
That's soft, I don't get it.
Yeah, look into that.
I have seen, I have seen about three streets chipped and sealed and we lost every damn one I was in the year.
I don't wanna have one to lose against the city.
You're never gonna work, you want me to go waste three, that four, five thousand dollars and a year later, you're back to a gravel street again. We chipped and sealed, uh, cemetery room, talking one going back there. Then they covered it and they did uh, fourth street once, or what was that? Charlie Kaufman, they had it down, going back.
Oh, to a boat, uh, you only say fifth street.
Well, well, then it didn't hold up no time. Chip and seal, maybe the people doing it didn't know, but it-
Well, I was gonna say, I, I, I feel my mental route and then they all were hurt.
We got out there right now, that's gonna be covered, they're gonna cover it sometime if they're out there. But we, we, we're gonna, we're losing another street, we got it, I got it. Now, I can take an inch of overlay and save a street. But you can't take an inch and build a new street. It costs five times as much to build a street as it does to save one. You can take an inch of overlay with a little bit of patching and you can save a street. Most time. Now, I didn't have nothing to do with this fourth street deal, but that was a bad treat. It was terrible. It wasn't a bad deal, it was a bad-
I'm just saying I just-
But we used to have this conversation many times, and I know you think I don't wanna do your street.
I'm just saying, I just want a plan. I just wanna hear a plan, at least consider it. That's, that's all I'm saying.
The day we start getting some tax money then, that, that do more than just supplement our street departments of maintaining the money. Doing the things we do. So I'd be glad with it. We don't have no reserve money for a street plan. And we hired some new equipment this year, but it didn't go up to just a few dollars to go get it.
Well, he does have a point in that, whether it be his street or not, we have, the city should have priorities on what needs to be fixed next, what needs to be done, what needs to be fixed next. And then when you have the money, you just go boom, that's the next thing, boom, that's the next thing.
He ain't telling me nothing. I know what a priority is there. And my priority is there is no money to do any of them. And if I did, and right now, if we ain't had fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know where we're going?
No.
Overlaying the street is gonna be gone in two or three more years. That's where we go, cause that's your priority. You gotta save what you got before you make something up. Or now you're gonna lose what you got and then-
I'll, 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 I'll grab on the same streets I'm grabbing on, cause for twenty-seven years I've driven them.
It was gravel.
Give me, give me a little favor.
Was that not gravel when you moved there? And here was gravel when you moved there, didn't you? Did anybody promise you that it was gonna be asphalt in a few years?
I'm just asking for a plan.
Well, I, I just gave you a plan. If we get the money, if the board is free with me, we're gonna save what we got. And then whenever we get things saved, then we got money, we're gonna look at third street, your street, that's, you go back to White Drive, White Drive, they all go to their street. Get as bad as you want, your street is better than some of them. I can get you a load of rock this week, or next week, too late this week. If that's what you want right now, I can get you a whole lot. You get sidewalk over, ain't rock, there's nothing, I'll get you rock. And what I'm telling you, Fred, I mean, I'd love to get you a road. I'd love to, but they don't read.
It's a serious responsibility to do these things, and you told me what your plan is.
I just gave you a plan. If we ever get any money, and I lived in there real close, here's my plan. As long, I'm old, I don't have any more, how long I'm gonna be mayor, but as long as I'm mayor, my plan is if we ever get enough money, we're gonna try to save about two or three streets we're gonna lose. And then if we ever get any money, we'll through process elimination the works, try to fix some streets that's gravel. We got about four of them. And that, don't mean you're gonna be the first, don't mean be the last, don't mean that major, I don't know. But I cannot see in foreseeable future of being able to asphalt any street, make a new street anywhere in this town. I'm telling you, I did. Now, the only lie thing, yeah, just as soon as we get, look, I'm looking at what's gonna do your street, but that's a damn lie. Does that make it better?
I'm not aware of what I said.
I, I don't know, there's infrastructure, infrastructure bill that they're working on. Is there any provision in there that would, we could get money for to, to do some of these projects?
What?
Buying that infrastructure bill that the president's trying to push.
We have been trying ourselves to get money from the floods and things, and we don't get it, we don't get it.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know.
I mean, I know towns get it, but they get more political pull and things, things are gonna have very much political pull with our county or our state.
Okay, I'll, it was just, you know.
But I'm sure that they look at every grant and everything, it, it, it's hard to get a grant to fix the street. It's just all a composite. Now, you can get a grant to, you'll access it all maybe or something, if it benefits the community and the county and everything like that, but grants are hard to get.
On sixty-one or Second Streets, like in front of my place and clients and whatever. They built up the road all the time where there's, it's like that almost drop off between them, and there's some guy that killed there. As you know, remember years, ten years ago, by hitting that ditch and getting launched out of it and hitting that curb and bank there. When they put a s- road through or repair that road, isn't there any consideration given to the, what they're creating clearance wise?
They don't care if you park on that tree now. They'll be got a back off. They know what they're doing, we can't get the sidewalk in there. I would put sidewalk, be thrown out and be dirt, that's what they are. And the curbing there, that part, if they wrecked it, that's not there, they won't build sidewalks, even though they probably built the one that was there, I don't know. I don't know what you're talking about dropping off there.
It's serious.
They used to cut these roads down a little bit when it gets so hot. But we can't even get them to clean out the ditches about one to ten years. You, more you hear, the more you learn, so.
And that's a problem we had, it's been elected for so long now that, that we're spending money to play catch-up on what we gotta do to catch up on the roads and the ditches and the streets now, the culverts and, and et cetera. That's our problem, we're playing catch-up.
Well, you should, did, did you ever try to get a plan out of the three or four people in the office after I left office? Huh?
You noticed.
Well, then you know what happened, and you know how much it went.
Why you think I didn't force you?
Well, then. I ain't, I ain't-
You got a back on.
Let me get my finger on the ground and see if we get, if we get some back money, I'd be glad. This town could be brought back some. But it sure the hell ain't gonna be done overnight. It went down for six or seven years. And it ain't gonna come back overnight. The, the priorities wasn't keeping the town growing, they were just certain things. But I'm not gonna get too many politics on that. But I do know when I'm not trying to put a fair amount, all the plans that I had and was doing, the years I left office, it went to hell.
Yeah, they went once, when you went.
And everybody here that's been around knows what we were doing. Now, they were some, they had time to come since then. But it was mismanagement, I guess I'll say, I don't know. But I, I think it is a-
Anyway, anyway.
But I reserve to have the, the revenue and the people and the things that we had back then. And if you watch your budget and do things right, you can do something. This thing about we can't get nothing done. Everything's in the red, everything that we got in this town, there's no reserve, there's not a hole in anything. And it, they not know that we're trying, but now, that's just like this watering, people think that we were terrible, but if I don't wanna pay a deal, I pay a water bill every month, sewer bill like about, I know you don't want to. But you also have enough to know that if they raise our rates, we gotta raise our rates. The, the government regulations killing us too. D and R is just, twenty-four, one and two, they're just murdering us. They make rules for the big cities to bleed down their little cities, and they can't, we can't do what they do. I'm gonna go to hell for it because of some of the things that we had to do, we can't do it, they can't do it.
I better shut up before I get in trouble.
I'm hoping we had heard them.
I make a motion there during this meeting.
Come on, baby.
Aye.
Hold it. Come back again, Fred, nice talking to you.
I wanna work with you. I know a whole lot more for you than I can against you, but I will not fight you.
I am.
I will not fight you, but if I fight you-
I know you can be a good guy too. If he's a good guy, have him yourself, and I know what you can do.